Thank you, Trustee Otto. Trustee Malauulu?
Hello.
Did you say you want to go?
We all look alike.
Oh, I don't know. I've called you Otto twice. You weren't here one time when I called you that.
Even worse.
Thank you. Trustee Kellogg.
Thought it was a compliment.
You both have beautiful hair. How's that? Okay.
Good comeback.
Thank you. I am sorry. I apologize. I don't want to let you guys down. I know you're just waiting for me to, you know, show some pictures again like the December meeting. I just couldn't get it together in time. I was traveling over the weekend. But I, first of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year, everybody. I'm excited about the new semester starting. I hope that everybody associated with the district has a great second semester and finishes the year off strong. I stopped counting. I attended so many of the college Christmas parties in December. I think there were two that I couldn't go to. One because there was an event at my kid's school and another one because I think I was delayed at one party and I went to the wrong building, so I missed the other party. But there were just so many, and it kind of sparked an idea in my head. So I would like to nominate myself to become the chairperson of the All District Christmas Party, the first annual that we'll be having later this year.
We used to have them.
So we're going to reinstate that.
Good.
So I've already talked to some people and we're going to have an all-college, so everybody can go and it'll be like on a Friday or Saturday night and everybody will get dressed up and it'll be an evening party. So, you know, yeah, we're going to step it up. You know, going to 19 parties in three days was a bit much even for me. So we're going to work something out. But it was great. It was really great to fellowship and share holiday festivities with the faculty, staff, and get to socialize even for just a few minutes at a time. It was a really good opportunity and I enjoyed it. I also attended, I think, all of the 5,000 farewells that our outgoing superintendent-president had. He had just as many farewell events as we had holiday parties on campus.
Are they over?
Yeah. I think there's one more still pending. But so that was also nice to see how much support he has in the community and throughout the college. I also had the opportunity to attend the Lead Academy graduation event at Hotel Maya. That was a really nice event, even though it was raining and the food got a little wet. It was a really nice event. And what I really enjoyed is I really enjoyed the ideas that the Lead Academy students presented as groups. There was one in particular that I thought, what a fascinating idea. It was the one about waiting in line. It was the application, and I know that there are institutions who have that in place, and I'm looking forward to having that implemented here because I know students who wait in line for five hours to try to take care of their business at the admissions office where they could be somewhere else. So it's kind of neat how you can have that application, and I'm looking forward to that happening. Also, on Saturday, I think it was, I don't remember the date, I think it was the 19th? I don't remember. Whatever that Saturday was in December, my daughters and I volunteered at the care event for, it was, you know, it was faculty and staff who got together to raise not so much as funding but as items to give to our students who are parents. And it was really neat because they were providing our students not only things for themselves but also toys and goodies for their children who were there too. Face painting. And the only thing that was disappointing is that there just weren't that many people there, faculty and staff. It was like, I think, maybe five or six faculty or staff members there. And it was a big event. They had a lot of students and their families there. And when I asked around, I got the same response. A lot of people didn't know it was happening. Now, I did get an email for that early in the month, maybe even November, because I remember posting about it. So I think that maybe a follow-up email would have been better from the organizers that week, just as a reminder. So many things fall through the cracks during the holidays where people have an intention to attend or participate, but then they forget about it because something else comes up. But this year, I would personally like to get more involved in that care program to help our students. When the new year started, right away, the staff hit the ground running. And then Trustee Zia and I met with a couple of the vice presidents to discuss some issues happening in our technical education program. It's a personnel issue, so I can't really discuss it. But I was really impressed when I came on campus on January 5th to see everybody, you know, head down going to work, because I'm still in holiday mode. You know, I'll be in holiday mode until February, but everybody was already working hard and meetings were happening and emails started popping up on January 3rd. So that was, that was good. And then this past Saturday, just to reiterate what the CCAFA President Janay Hahn mentioned about seeing so many of our faculty and staff members participating in the Women's March, I actually participated in it. I was on a college tour with my youngest daughter on the East Coast, and I participated in it in Raleigh, North Carolina. And there were so many teachers there. That was, one of the photos that I would have shown you is, you know, there were educators marching in the march and they were doing it for students. And it's not just a California issue. It's an issue across the country. So anybody that works in the industry with education is definitely getting involved. Whether or not you support the march or not is not the issue. The fact that you support students and education is. And lastly, once again, is I would just like to say thank you again to the administration and the staff for allowing this meeting to happen here. I understand that it was not easy. Jerome and Myra, you guys did a lot of work and you're still doing a lot of work, but I really appreciate that. And I know that the community and the faculty here, the staff, appreciate it as well. I don't like when people say things like, oh, you know, we're PCC is, you know, they forget about us. Well, we don't forget about you. We're here, we're having a meeting here, and then we hopefully will have more once the new facility is up and running. Thank you.
Trustee Otto. No. That's Trustee Otto talking.
I'm actually Trustee Kellogg.
There you go.
So, Happy New Year to everybody. Jeff and Anne Marie and Jenny and I all went to Ryan Volmer's funeral. It was as sad as everybody has said. We were piquing and we were shocking and shockable. Rather than talk about things that went on last year or even recently, I'd like to talk about a couple of things in the future. This is, this upcoming weekend, as Andor has said, is the CCLC conference in Sacramento. It's first, it's a trustee conference, and then it's the legislative conference where we go to talk to members of the Assembly and Senate about the things that we care about. The only other piece of information I'd give to what Anne Marie said about construction projects and the $27 million we are floating out there and that Jeff said is that I think the governor also has, maybe he did not like Act 51, but it passed, and he's doing what he does. But he also, I think, has a bias in favor of, despite the priorities, awarding first or earlier these construction projects to districts that he believes in his own mind need them more. And needs a funny thing, but I've had a couple of conversations with people. And we'll just see. I think Anne Marie is so well-positioned to help us lobby on this thing that that's very important. We hope we can get the money so that we can do this budget movement unconscionable for voters to say, this is what we want, and then not have them do it during his term of office. So hopefully that will be solved. The conference is, got a lot of things going on, but particularly relevant to us, I think, at Long Beach City College is that at the California Community College Trustees Association Board Meeting, we're going to do some trustee professional development, which we usually don't do. Largely, people say, you know, trustees, they're all about budgets and buildings and every now and then a bond measure. But we also have responsibilities for educational quality. It's not just a student success thing. But as a result of that, we're doing professional development, and we're going to do it in the area of trustee's responsibility for the quality of the education we do. And the two components of this are, the first component is just what are the rules about approving courses, approving programs and new programs, which are more complicated than people think. And we as trustees, I think, Anne Marie, spend very little time on them because those matters are largely left to the faculty, both under the ed code and under Title V. But we have the ultimate responsibility. And just as Harry said, or Dr. Wong said, there's a lot of thought right now going into how to do that more quickly in a world where we need to get these programs out so that people can get the jobs that become available as they are on a quicker basis. And also, how do you decide that programs are not, are no longer needed on your campus? And trustees, as we all know here, have real responsibilities for that. So we're going to talk about that, so trustees know what some of the rules are for the doing of that. And then the second thing is more student success-related, and that means that what is it that we have respons, I mean, are we offering the right products? Are we doing it in an efficient, effective way? Are we satisfying our customers, which are students and their significant others and industry? And are we doing it to the satisfaction of the people that ultimately say we can exist which is our credit? And we're going to talk about that in a sort of Socratic way and hopefully bring some of that back. In fact, one of the things I'll do in the next agenda item is request that there be an ad hoc committee that Trustee Malauulu has agreed to serve with me on if we do it, to look into that subject and how that's changing and how that will affect us. And it's not in-depth, but there's a lot of information out there, and it's a changing area of what we do. And let's see what's in place. And so with that, given the latency of the hour, I'll stop. And it'll be a good conference, and I'm glad we're going to have a student trustee there and several other.
Trustee Zia?
I have no report.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, I'll make mine fast. First of all, I want to thank the Economic Development Department because, oh, Vivin left. Okay. Or is detained. Their party focused on our homeless students. And so in order to go to their party, one needed to bring or give money or bring food items. And those items went to the pantry at the Pacific Coast Campus. So, thank you. That was very, very thoughtful, and we appreciate that. Then also, I attended the Lead Academy graduation, which was very well-done, and I want to congratulate Vice President Rose DeGardio. That was on the 15th. On the 16th, I attended the Emeritus Luncheon. And this is the luncheon which all the retirees are invited, and it's always fun to see people. And my big belief is these are the people who have invested their lives at the college, and it's important to invite them to come back on campus. And along those lines, they have been invited to the State of the College address, which is on February 3rd. And I hope that many of them come because they still are invested in our institution and we appreciate their commitment to Long Beach City College. Then on January 5th, I attended the Mayor's Fund Launch for Preschool Education, and our college was well-represented. And the Mayor, Mayor Garcia, would like to see every opportunity for preschool children to have a chance at that because it has been proven that they start out life better if they have that preschool education. I attended the State of the City speech on December, uh, December, January 10th, the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade on the 14th and the Volmer Memorial. On January 19th was the Foundation Breakfast, and Ben Hani Efron gave an excellent presentation on the Facility's Master Plan. And I want to thank, Betty, if you will, tell Ben Hani, thank you for doing that. And then, like I said, I want to encourage everyone to attend the State of the College Luncheon on February 3rd in the Hall of Champions, but you have to RSVP so that we can have sufficient food. And that is my report. So now is the opportunity for board members to request future board agendas. And Trustee Otto, I think you just said that a minute ago. Anybody else? Well, I wrote down, Trustee Otto, thank you, and Trustee Malauulu, but what is the title of your ad hoc committee?
Let's call it Board. Pardon?
Trustee Committees. I thought, oh, there are no current committee reports? Well, he just volunteered to have an ad hoc committee.
We're on 10.1, I think.
Okay, okay, it's my fault. 10.1. And what's the title?
Did we do 9.5?
I think Board Secretary Hahn is referring to 9.5 if you're establishing an ad hoc committee so she can write it into the minutes. Because you need to write it into the minutes, right?
Yeah. And so right now, there are no trustee committee reports because we've had an extensive one on the presidential search. So now I'm on 10.1.
I got it.
Oh, DACA.
How would she form the new committee? Wouldn't it be under? Got it.
Okay, yes, the other report was by DACA, on DACA.
It would be under 9.5, right?
Okay, let's move on. 10.1.
10.1. And Trustee Otto, will you tell me the title of your ad hoc committee?
Sure. It's trustee's responsibility for the curriculum. And what we want to look into is what's going on in Sacramento, in the Chancellor's Office, and in other places about streamlining the curriculum both for persons and for faculty.
Okay, thank you. All right. Schedule reports.
We'll flush it out.
Yeah, Dr. Benny.
That's my point, and I'm sure that you're talking about. So the fact that you're back to the actual, so. Your special, your future board.
I don't get what you're coming.
I feel it offline to your public questions. And if you can, you can add that to the report.
Okay. Then in 10.2, Superintendent President Gabel suggested that we list the scheduled upcoming reports. And so they are at the bottom of that whatever page number this is, so that you can be aware of what's coming in the future. If you look, there's 10 scheduled reports. So we've got many reports scheduled. Is there anything you wanted to talk about that or just have it listed?
I think we just wanted to list them so that the board knew that these presentations would be coming. And this is what we have scheduled out between now and June. So as you can see, we have a very full agenda between now and June with these reports that we've already scheduled out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 11.1. Bargaining. And that's you, Thomas?
Good evening, President Baxter, Board of Trustees, interim President Gabel, and what's left of the guests on this long marathon session. It was interesting as far as like being in Sacramento, like Trustee Alejandro mentioned as far as that Otto was there, and then, of course, your new chancellor from our organization and from our district was there, and then two other members in there. And the fact is, on the plane, on the flight coming back from Sacramento, Chancellor Eloy mentioned to me not to give President Gabel a bad time. So your first meeting and you get a pass, okay?
Thank you.
On the other side of things, as far as, first of all, Happy New Year, and I'm hoping that for the classified staff that it will be a Happy New Year. Just a reminder, as far as you guys remember back in the member, on December the 13th, the plumber retired, the carpenter retired, two custodians retired, and this week, the painter was released as far as from the, from the district. In 2012, we had two electricians. Now we have one. In 2012, we had two plumbers. Now we have none. We have no painter, and we have no carpenter. So what happens with these positions being gone? They get backfilled by other classified employees. Skill maintenance guys are going to become a plumber. Steel maintenance guys are going to be a painter. Skill maintenance guys is going to be an electrician. Skill maintenance guy is going to be a carpenter. And in saying that, that leaves one, two, three, four voids as far as like where it is, who's doing their job? We're light on custodians, and what happens is, and you guys all look at all the new buildings, just like the building that we're in now, it's brand-new and everything else. And the biggest downfall on the new facility is maintenance. If the building is not maintained, the first thing it's going to do is going to deteriorate, is going to go down. You're going to have a meeting, and you're going to walk in here and you're going to go say, wow, why do we even want to come in here? Right now, as we speak, there is budgeted $900,000 for classified employees, which isn't being spent. When I'm looking at the list on the recruitment list as far as for the carpenter, and it says TBD, which is meant to be determined. And what are we determining? If we need it or if we don't? It's already been allocated as far as for that. The money is there. You have approved it. I want to put the pressure on you as far as the board to find out from the district, why are we not bringing back the employees and why are we not hiring them after you've already approved the money for them? We're not asking for new positions, new titles, or any upgrades. Two custodians went out. We don't have a hiring date that says TBD, to be determined again. If these people left, they were doing a job, the budget's there, it's been approved by you, and why is it taking so long to bring them back? The plumber left 12:13, and when I'm looking at the recruitment, TBD again. What are we trying to determine about bringing back people that are gone? It's not like we didn't know they were gone because on the 13th, we had a reward. President, past President Eloy gave them congratulations, gave them a certificate, 20 years' service, 30 years' service, or what have you. Now, what are we determining now is if we're going to have a painter, if we need a plumber, if we need a carpenter? We have to look around with all the new buildings. Who's going to do the maintenance on all the buildings if the buildings are getting more, there's more square footage to clean, more square footage to maintain, and the staff is shrinking? But we're not asking for less work, and we're not asking for or giving the employees a reduction in work. We're still requiring those employees to do that. And the custodians, in fact, is they're asking you to do more. And this is what happens. You guys know when you overextend yourself, what happens? You don't get hurt, because we say like in a sports fixture, and then like, I'm sure that up. Trustee Kellogg can relate to this. When you get hurt, they say rub some dirt on it and keep going. These employees are getting injured, okay? They're going to have to turn around and go to doctors, in some cases, go to QME, come back, and then find out their restrictions are taking them out of qualifications for their jobs. And then the next thing you know, they're out of a job. Now, they're paying the price twice. They're asked to do more, getting paid the same, overextending themselves, and then when they get injured, there's no safety net for them. The district's going to listen to them, we're going to get the examination, we're going to try to rehab and what have you. But if your injury prevents you from doing or maintaining or taking care of the basic necessities, minimum qual of your job, you're not going to have one. So what I'm asking the board tonight is to set something on the agenda for this item to be brought up, discussed, and talk about the money that you've already approved for classified jobs and why that money isn't being spent on those positions. We're not asking for new positions, just the positions that's already there, already in the budget, and already approved by you. Because what I fear is if that money sits there too long, it's going to go somewhere else. Classified management could slide over as far as I can go into faculty salaries and so on and so forth. We've been told for years and years that we're valuable, but we're not feeling it because we're not being valued as far as employees, as far as being paid, or get us back to or close to the status that we had in 2012. This college isn't smaller. We just talked about we're going to get our students back as far as like the number's going up and what have you. You don't have a plumber, and you look in this brand-new building, if anything happens, the water thing's back up and what, who are you going to call? You got a new facility, somebody comes up and, nice new wall, and go by and somebody puts their handprints, there's no painter. So those handprints stay there. We have nice rooms like this, like a non-eating room, so we don't get all the spoils and everything else in the carpet. I was at the President Superintendent's Retirement Party, one of those parties that was in T-1200. The next time you guys have a board meeting in 1100, just walk across the hallway and look at that building. We need the maintenance, we need the individuals, and we need to have you fight for us or question the district why the money that's already approved isn't being used to pay for classified salaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, public comments on non-agenda items, a total of three minutes, and we don't have that fancy-smancy, and that's why I was looking at my watch, Thomas. We don't have the fancy-smancy timer, so I'll just have to try it. But is it Kenneth Jones? Okay, Kenneth Jones is going to speak about trades and staff. So you have three minutes, Mr. Jones, who is a student.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you once again, and good evening to ladies and gentlemen of this board. I'm glad that y'all say the best for last, so I'll get straight to it. I'd like to acknowledge the accomplishments and recognition that our trades have accomplished. One group in particular is our automotive department. You know, we had a, we had a long fight trying to save our trades. Everybody knows that. And we feel that a big part of this, big part of this fight that we did it for was our instructors, not only instructors, but this college as a whole. And me being a veteran, a lot of veterans, they ask me when they see me at Long Beach City College, right on the VA, it was like, so tell me about Long Beach City College. Tell me about their programs, certificates and stuff. That's where I, when they get to that part of certificate, I kind of, I'm like stuck because I don't know what to really tell them as far as, okay, I know that we said our welding, they get these certificates now, but what about our carpenters? What about our automotive and stuff? Where do they fall in that category? And these are questions that are always asked to me by a lot of students because they look at me as a leader, because me being a past Viking recipient and ASB student leader, you know. So these are questions they ask me. A lot of them, they don't really want to come and ask the board because they feel like the board doesn't listen. And I had to tell them, no, the board does listen. You just have to be patient, come to the board meeting, and feel, you know, don't be afraid to speak your mind, you know, because they will listen. They are human. They, you know, they're not going to bite your head off, and they will acknowledge, you know, listen to what you have to say. Now, on behalf of SEMA Education, we would like to recognize Long Beach City College for participating in the 2016 Show Student Program, SEMA Show Student Program. SEMA, for a lot of you that don't know, I was going to try to show you on the slide, but I think I waited too long to put it on, you know. So SEMA is the biggest car show in the United States. SEMA acknowledges Long Beach City College, even though their instructor didn't make it there this time this year, but some of the students did. They acknowledged us. They also even gave us a website to go to. They're going to give each of our students, if they apply, a $5,000 scholarship. Now, with that being said, first thing they ask is, do our staff, do our board support our students as far as certificates and stuff? Because if not, then these places won't support us. And we have instructors that reached out to Mercedes-Benz, BMW, all these people, KAY Toyota, they sponsor us in the parades and everything. But if we don't show them that we have interest in our students, then they're going to stop sponsoring us or whatnot. So then what do we do? That's the question I asked the board. What do we do? So what can you guys do or what can we do to help each other break that, you know, break that barrier or whatnot and get these certificates to these students that really need it, that want to get these jobs? So, and I had more to say, but I'll save it on another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, there is no need for a second closed, oh, thank you. There is no need for a second closed session, so I will adjourn the meeting. And the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on February 28th, 2017 at the Liberal Arts Campus, Building T, Room 1100. Closed session at 4, open session at 5. Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. I would like a moment of silence in memory of Ryan Volmer and also the nursing student and the IT person. Name, I'm sorry, Anne-Marie. Kenya Buckner?
Yes.
Okay. A moment of silence in memory of those two, very, very tragic deaths. This meeting is adjourned.